I don't like to do this, but we only have a minute. To make that. We can do that as a class. Well, I think we need to be darned. To be darned. We need to be off. We need to know. How long? I think they do it for the weekend. I think. Over a month. Over a month. I'm sorry, we left for a minute. I don't believe it that bad.
Call to order.
Father, we thank you so much for this day and this time that we all can come together as a body to promote our community, our school systems. We ask that you be with us today, that you give us guidance and wisdom, that you take our steps and you lead us in the right direction. We know that it's always not easy coming up with good decisions, but we ask that you guide us and lead us to provide the best education, the true income, and these things we want.
If everybody will stand and we'll do catch wings.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm going to make a change to the agenda, item number seven, the District One seat. This is not for approval. What we are doing tonight is to pare down the applicant pool to a couple of names and to move that through to the full board. So however we want to describe that. Approval of the candidates to move forward to the full board of the District One seat. Now we are approved the agenda, so I need someone to make a motion. Thank you, Mr. P. Thank you, Ms. Hargit. All in favor? Moving to number five, our consent agenda, our personal agenda. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you, Ms. Savage. All in favor? And we're going to move now to local current expense. She got it first. She got it first. I said it right. Local current expense, Dr. Ellis and Mr. Karpinski. Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the duty of the superintendent to present to the full board superintendent's budget for you to use, peruse, make changes to, and to support to become your budget in whatever format, whatever changes you need made. What we present to you tonight is the first blush. It has gone through the Finance Committee earlier tonight, and I would defer to Mr. Karpinski to take us through it and also to the Finance Chair, Mr. Gus.
Sir, I have before you a draft of the Union County Public Schools Superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year 1415, and I will walk you through the documents. Certainly if you have any questions, please feel free to post them as they come up. And I think the key thing on this is the fact that we're up against the wall this year because we did not get state allowances till April 1st, and we got revised state planning allowance April 17th. So as of Thursday, I roughly worked Wednesday and Thursday last week, I've been trying to analyze the state planning allowance to see how it impacts what we may or may not have passed work in the coming year. So cabinet met yesterday, we made many adjustments, and we tried to put it all together, and we did a pretty good job of getting it there. There are a couple of things that Finance Committee brought up that need to be changed, and there are a couple exhibits that will be forthcoming soon. With that said, Budget Executive Summary Message to Citizens. As we said earlier, this would be the superintendent's budget executive summary and message to citizens at this point. And what will happen is on May 6th, Board of Education will have the opportunity to make their budget proposal to the County Commission. But this is the process is it goes from a superintendent's proposed budget to the Board of Education's proposed budget, and there can be changes even on May 6th if you all decide to do so. The reforming we have by law is to have the County Commission by May 6th. So with that said, I'll give you all a little time to look at the Budget Executive Summary Message to Citizens. We do have it on the screen for the public to view, and certainly you want to make sure you look at it. Finance Committee has looked at it, and like I said, there are some minor changes throughout the document, not necessarily to the Budget Executive and Message to Citizens. And to the public, I apologize, but like you said, it's a quick word, I think it's a read and cover. We will have this out on the website as soon as changes the Board Finance Committee made today and the exhibits are included, and we promised the Board Finance Committee that we would give it to everybody by next week, Tuesday, by the end of day. Some of the highlights of this, of course, are what we expect to accomplish going forward as a school system. It talks a little about what our needs are, what our mission is, and certainly some of the challenges we face. And then it goes into the summary as to what we're requesting from the County Commission in terms of what was awarded by the jury, and then additions to that as well. And then, of course, at this point, we don't know for certain, but the Department of Public Construction annually gives us an estimate of what they think our enrollment is going to increase. And this entire budget is predicated based on planning allowance that suggests we're going to have thousand additional students next year compared to this year, and that's every year membership. So unless anybody has any questions about Budget Executive Summary and Message to Citizens, this, of course, ultimately will be signed by the Board Chair after the Board scrutinizes it and makes changes as they see fit. Yes, if I could explain that tab. Correct. There's two versions going on here. On page four, you have a version that starts with what the jury said per GS 115C, 431C, that is legally necessary. Of course, that amount of 87,233,542 is that amount. That was the jury award as per the verdict. Of course, that's on appeal, but we started this particular page four with that 87,233,542. And then what you see as proposed increases to that are in fact the estimated local cost of governors' proposed teacher pay, systemized vacancy increases, estimated increases in retirement health insurance, insurance increases, legal costs, maintenance, custodial, supplies and repair, estimated increase to charter schools, and then salary adjustment. Now, one thing that was noted in the Finance Committee, that salary adjustments for UCPS personnel included within should say page six. So that 1,152,488 should say included within page six salary increases. And then the other adjustment that was made at the Finance Committee was since we don't know what the estimated fiscal impact of virtual charter schools is as of today, we don't even think we're going to know as of May 15th what that impact may be. That could be tied up in legislature, so after that, we're just going to put TBD or to be determined as far as the amount is concerned on that. We just want to know that that is a need that we believe might impact us, but we don't know the amount of this. Yes, sir.
And as I understand it, there are two state virtual charters that may or may not be approved. And I couldn't tell you their names off the top of my head, but they're looking at grades three through 12. And I think it'll take them three years to get up to full student enrollment. And if I remember correctly, they start out with seven or eight hundred students statewide the first year, and then they go up to, it's just shy of 2,000. It's in the teens, like maybe 15, 13, 15, 18 hundred. I don't know. So if statewide, that is the impact, I don't think the first year will be a tremendous impact to Union County Public Schools. I do not know, and I'll be very honest with the Board. I see the virtual much more as a learning tool for children who have the rudimentary reading and math skills as opposed to still trying to learn to read. So I don't know what that's going to be, but it will be something and it will increase, I would say, as time will go on. And that's what I know about the state virtual charter statewide. I don't know. I would think it would be the July State Board meeting or even August. I don't know. But I do know that it would be after we submit to the County Commissioners May 15th, right? Right, right. It will be, yeah. It definitely after this Board has approved the budget.
So page four tries to reflect our budget increase above and beyond the jury award of the 87,220. Page five starts at what we got from the County Commission, which is 83,021,819. Correct. That's exactly it. We tried our best to disseminate where the starting point was by starting with either jury verdict or what we actually got. That shows two different pictures for us. Right. That's correct, and that's important to know because essentially our line ends up being the same, meaning the total county appropriation we're looking for to fund local current expense for Union County Public Schools is 89,920, but of course, if you start at 87, which is jury verdict, that's a $2.7 million difference versus starting at 83, then it's a $6.9 million change or increase. But that distinction hopefully is done well, and certainly is something that must be understood by both Boards.
I want to make sure that you're clear on this point, that this, the 4.9 million that's in the jury award or current expense is in the main tied up in bringing our work groups to the state average. Our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, our coaches, our athletic directors, our non-certified people, to not pay them more than the state average, but then bring them up to the state average. And that is even a misnomer because it would be up to last year's state average because that's the 12, 13, that's the last data we had. And so that is where that money is earmarked. It's for the people who work with our children daily.
And I think what we try to do on those three pages is, starting with the jury verdict, we have the Board of Education proposed increase, starting with the 83,021, which is what we got this year. It's 2014-15 means greater than 13, 14 county appropriations. So the heading is designed to reflect communication that is necessary to make sure that the public understands what we're doing there. So like I said, on page four, the two things you'll see when I send it to the full board next Tuesday, you'll see that we're going to put a to be determined as far as the virtual charter schools, and then that page four, on page four is going to say page six because that 1,152 is part of those salary adjustments noted on page six. No ma'am, what happened last year is the state took money away from us for virtual public schools in terms of our classroom change.
Yeah, are you talking, I think, right. Union Academy, Socrates, Queens Grant.
Schools is of course different than virtual, but charter schools, we paid, we plan on paying them approximately $3.4 million this year. So this would bring it up to approximately $3.7 million. At 300,000, which is noted on page five, fourth from the bottom. Excuse me, second from the bottom. Estimated increase in payments to charter schools will be 300 more than this year, and I would estimate off the top of my head because enrollment change is at all 10 of the ones we pay, but my best guess would be we'd be paying 2.4, excuse me, 3.4 approximately this year. This would bring it to 3.7. And if there's any number that I'm not sure of, because I did contact Union Academy, they said they were going to experience a 6.7% increase in enrollment next year. And of course, I didn't have time to talk to all the charters, but it's important to know that charter schools have a presence in our children, depending, and that's fine, but we have to pay, you know, the local funds for all the charter. Yes, sir. Basically, 112 typically. Sometimes I'll double up, but, you know, generally speaking, 112. At the beginning of year was very difficult because I wasn't getting any good numbers from anywhere, including Union County Public Schools, but that was for the power school. So once, we didn't have numbers to give, it was difficult, but I didn't even wait for invoices from the charter.
Let me clarify, power school is a state issue, not a Union County issue.
That's right. It's state. That's right. It's statewide issue. I wasn't getting numbers from them, nor did we have good numbers until late. So thank you for clarifying that. That wasn't just Union County Public Schools.
And virtual, the virtual school we have right now, NCU, BPS, we, they find out how many children we have signed up for classes and then they take those ADM slots from us. What we've started doing is writing our, making our own classes and then paying our teachers to teach it as opposed to teachers from other LAAs to help our teachers.
Then to complicate things more, I think, isn't the virtual charter schools yet another subset?
Yeah, one of them is K-12, I think is the name of it, and something Connections maybe. I don't remember, but they will be, they're for-profit virtual charters, not to be confused with North Carolina DPI's virtual charter, which is not for-profit.
Okay, so as you can see, and the nice part about it is each of these numbers is supported by exhibits. So if you're okay with the general formatting change that I mentioned about page four, we can then note that the local current expense corporation or proposed county corporation at this point would be a total of eighty-nine, nine twenty-six fifteen, which does include jury verdict.
And might I speak about exhibits for just a minute? In the past, the Board of County Commissioners has expressed concern about the lack of depth of the document that we give them in the uniform budget format. So we elected this year to add in addition, an exhibit for each one, a justification for what department it came through, knowing that at the school level, the site-based committee, the PTO, and the teachers met on this, the principals met in clusters and they met at levels to discuss what their greatest needs were, that this has been fully vetted in a number of places. And so we plan to send back for the first time to the county commissioners in the spirit of, you say you want more information, no problem, we'll do what we can.
Apparently, it might be going out of forty-five for charter schools based on the six-point-seven percent of her from Union Academy. But that's just an interesting side.
I spoke with the headmistress there, she, she's a friend of mine. And there, I think, if I remember correctly, they're opening up their kindergarten enrollment to include about fifty more slots. And they're making space for a few more children, not a tremendous amount, because they think they've, from what I understood from her, they could do that. So they were looking at, they're purchasing, I think, a couple mobile minutes for a couple of extra classes. And that's where I think that number comes from, with their expansion.
Like I mentioned, the increase that DPI believes we're going to have is a thousand even. You'll see that this document shows that eleven more than that, but that's prepaid. Because this document includes prepaid enrollment as well. Yes, sir, okay. Going on to B, this explains why we need the money for the estimated governors' proposed teacher pay. Right now, what we base this on is a chart that we got as part of the governor's proposal. The disappointing part of it, as Dr. Ellis mentioned to the Finance Committee, is that it only helps teachers from zero experience to nine years' experience. It does not help those with ten or more years' experience. I've heard talk that they're looking at it, but we'll see what happens. That's all this is based on. So if the governor changes and we have, quite frankly, most of the people that we pay aren't from zero to nine, but that won't help the people that are state-paid if they're ten years' experience or more. Uh, C, I met with our banking institution and bottom line is, it was like hitting a letter in the mail saying the fees are going up and you have no choice. In fact, it started April first, so this is the estimate of how much it's going to go up. And I'm looking at ways to reduce that, but given our current banking relationship, I have to project thirty-six dollars for that. They return matching contribution, it's a state mandate, and we've been told that that was going to increase to, from fourteen-point-six-nine percent to fourteen-point-nine-one percent. Uh, state hospital insurance is going up from fifty-two eighty-five to fifty-five forty-three as per D two of two. Um, insurance premium increase on exhibit E is, I met with our broker, and he said it's going to be an increase anywhere from three to five percent. Of course, as you have more students in your system, the risk of students getting hurt, so on and so forth goes up. So that's part of it, and then another condition, position, the other part of it. Once again, I'm not necessarily pleased with that, so I look at the shot, uh, insurance markets as best to make sure those premiums are at least in line with market. Legal costs, I think we can all read the justification and know what's going on right now. But it's important to know that we hope that we won't have to experience some of the same costs we incurred this year. Of course, we wouldn't incur the same cost, but hopefully, things will settle down. But we do need, uh, plans to help in our legal costs for various reasons. Facilities, this is just a sixteen percent increase for custodial supplies, maintenance supplies, maintenance repair parts. And it's predicated based on square footage and number of students, more students, more coverage, more pickup, everything. And certainly more wear and tear on things that need to be maintained. Uh, charter schools, we talked a little about that earlier. If any number's going to change in the superintendent's proposal, this would be one of them, but wasn't able to do enough work to know what other charter schools are experiencing. More than likely, the ones that go to Union Academy will impact us most, of course. But you know, if others are experiencing high growth rates, then there's no reason for me to change what's happening at Union Academy across the board. That's our best estimate at this point, but that may change. The next one, exhibit I, is getting to trying to get our employees' pay up to markets. And these market adjustments are needed to attract and retain quality employees. This exhibit I is for non-certified personnel such as custodians, maintenance people, bus drivers, secretaries, what have you in that particular pay category. Essentially, these people got one percent in the last five years. And this is just to help get it closer to market. But as we talked in the Finance Committee, I don't really think we're looking to get to market, we're just trying to catch up to market, to be more appropriately put, uh, let me say it. And the other, the next exhibit, which is J, this is where we know you're not getting to market because you're only trying to get to the average twelve thirteen, North Carolina state average for teacher supplements. K is only to get to the average of twelve thirteen for principal segments. And then L is only to get up to the twelve thirteen state average for system principals. Reason we use those years is because that's all the data that's available. So we're just trying to get to those state averages. Those supplements are to the same point, which is twelve thirteen, and that's M one-half and thirteen. And the next exhibit N is for high priority schools. Essentially, we have vacancies in high priority schools because we can't even attract teachers to come to some school. Um, so in order to attract teachers to those schools, we're going to have to pay more.
A teacher can drive across the county line to Mecklenburg County and make between five and six thousand dollars more because of their supplement. A teacher can drive to Fort Mill and make seven thousand dollars more by driving across the state line. And, um, we're seeing teachers leaving, I think, this past week, there was an article in the paper from about the Wake County teachers. I don't know if you saw that. We're going to experience the same phenomenon. It may come to us a little later. But teachers, if they don't get a pay raise, and they can go within driving distance to make more money, and especially if you're a two-teacher family, I've had multiple couples, one of the parents they got girls, do you see the change? Because if you don't, I'm going to have to leave education because I've got to make more money. And we lost one of the system's best English teachers this year. She and I had conversation and I wished her all the best, but she doubled her salary by going into a job in Mecklenburg County. It's outside of education. But it's, this, I want our employees to see that the staff and Union County Board of Education is fighting for them to receive some sort of pay increase in light of our, in light of the situations made by.
That concludes the presentation of the Superintendent's report of education proposal for local current expense. That's what was on the agenda. There is, there are documents in here related to capital outlay. Those have been vetted by the facilities committee as well as the Finance Committee. And they're in the packet because that will be the entire proposal. And certainly, we will make changes as we, as requested by the Finance Committee.
Then why don't you go over what those changes are requested by the Finance Committee, and then let's talk about the change in versus in capital.
Okay, there we go, we'll do that. Uh, I think I mentioned that the only changes on the local current expense, that would be to first, on page four, we would put to be determined on the virtual charter schools in terms of the dollar amount. And then we would, on page four, also change that salary adjustments for UCS, UCS personnel included within page four salaries. That's really should be referenced to page six. And then going to the capital, um, page seven, the board Finance Committee has suggested to better segregate jury award from the total proposal in that we would remove the seventy-one million from the top, have a subtotal, and then list the jury verdict. Just to be clear that we're not asking for this money twice. We are asking for ninety-seven, point seven million dollars, but that does include the jury award of seventy-one, point two million dollars. And it's important that the commissioners as well as the public realize that we're not asking for this money twice. We're just saying, hey, the needs are there, seventy-one million is part of the jury verdict. The rest of it is a ton of that for our fourteen, fifteen needs for identifying emergency capital projects, annual preventive maintenance, the exception of children's bus. I don't think the full board has seen this yet, but we did have more buses down here than now. And we only have need for one as per our transportation, our mutual transportation director. So we can look at just one instead of others as well. Then, as far as the exhibits, I think, starting with exhibit O, the, these are capital outlay schedules. Of course, we'll have to reflect change in how it's presented, um, on page seven. But then we also refer that it would be better if we could better highlight the differences between what the requests are. So it's more heading than anything else, but it's making sure that O looks different than E, which looks different than, uh, Q, uh, so on and so forth. It's just a matter of making sure that people realize there's a difference in the capital request from exhibit to exhibit so that they fully understand what it is they're looking at without having to, you know, decipher it. Going from page seven to an exhibit, when you pick up an exhibit, it should be self-supporting. It should be self-evident what you're looking at without having to flip back and learn to know what you're looking at. So just making the heading clear to make, making sure that commissioners and the public can better understand what the document is without having to pecking through, figure it out. As well as the bus and the NC bus and Susan's hand and the technology.
Thank you.
It'll be five.
Remember, the state statute says that we present all of our needs to the county. So, you know, that's part of this. So the jury award is part of that. To that, to Ms. Hodges's point from Finance Committee, it was important that we distinguish those so that you didn't take a snapshot, look and say, gee, ninety-seven million dollars, and then just immediately think that we were double dipping. So. Yes. And the county has seen, these numbers are loaded, the county's staff folks have already seen all of these numbers. So if it, you know, it sounds like we're doing some things to just make it pretty, in some ways we are to make it when, if the public is reviewing this document, or if the county commissioner is reviewing this document, that, that it's very obvious that, that we broke out that piece, that it's still there because it's part of our needs, but that we recognize that this is part of the jury award and, you know, one way or another, this will be dealt with. But for, you know, with this budget, here's what it is, but state statute requires that we put everything in there. Any questions?
And just to know, next time you see the document, you will also have an attachment to S, which is where the bus, there is no attachment, that's right now. And then if you go back to page seven, we reference on page seven that, see also comprehensive facilities study and comprehensive facilities plan, exhibit T and U, T and U are not in the fact, that are on our website already, but you'll get that as well. And then last but not least, through the fact that we just got planning allotments for federal budgets, that federal budgets don't impact local budgets like state budgets do. But we did get our planning allotment for federal on last Thursday, April seventeenth. There is no way in the world we could put together the uniform budget format that you're all used to looking at without putting the attention to detail that that document requires. But there may be other changes to this document to reflect. but there may be other changes to this document to reflect an analysis of that last state planning allotment that we got on April seventeenth. I think we're close to where we need to be, but we could not get the uniform budget which shows state, local, federal, capital, child nutrition after school, and special revenue fund all on the same page, because that document is instrumental in holistic look at all of our budgets so that the public can see it, as well as the county commissioners can make their decisions based on a holistic view of all of our budgets. That will be included in your package ultimately, but not by next Tuesday, because I think there is a lot more work to make sure all those numbers die out before we make that document public.
All right. You got anything else? If no further questions, we'll move on to item number seven, and I'm going to hand that off to, who am I handing that off to?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, we, in the strategic planning and technology meeting, we discussed the seven different applicants we had for the District One seat, and in our discussion, we decided what we do is narrow down the field and bring that narrow field up to the full board. In our discussion, we, going through the resumes, it became clear, at least to me, and obviously to the rest of the committee, because it became a unanimous decision, on two people we wanted to bring to the full board, and I believe it's okay to bring those names here tonight. The two names we came on was Ms. Sharon Harrell and Pastor Jimmy Vention. I said that right? So those are the two that we would like the full board to consider, and I believe at our next board meeting in May, I'd like to supremely to a vote.
Okay.
It was names.
Do we have any questions in the board at this point for strategic? Then what I would like everyone to do is to take some time between now and our next meeting and make phone calls, set up coffee, so if everybody would reach out to these two folks and have a conversation. If y'all can do that.
I'd like to make a motion that we narrow the field to the two, I'm sorry, to the two individuals that I just mentioned, Sharon Harrell and Pastor Jimmy Vention for consideration of the District One seat.
Does it come from the committee? All in favor? I think what Jimmy has. Now that that is approved, I'd like everybody to reach out to these two candidates and have a phone conversation, have, yes, individual conversations. Thank you, Dr. Jeffries. Everybody's got to make up your own mind. So at this point in time, you know, I think the work the Strategic Committee did, but yeah, now everybody needs to move forward individually and get together. All right?
I'd just like to say, I was, I wasn't surprised that seven counties set forth a development in that state, and I was, really, well, I was very, 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 I love that you set up this, I think, great, great, great resume.
I was, I was so duly impressed with the folks.
I appreciate you getting, whittling it down, but I really, I'm talking to everybody here.
Okay. Then we will move on to announcements. Dr. Ellis, you wanted to make an announcement.
I would like to recognize someone in the audience. Mr. Masoi Henry is here, and Masoi does not know that I'm going to recognize him. He, he is a, he works for Wingate University, and Wingate has partnered with the Union County Public Schools to help us, and what we're trying to do is trying to ensure that as many students who want to be college-bound are. And he works with our African-American males in grades ten, eleven, and sometimes twelve, trying to make sure they're college-bound with mentoring and different programs. It's Forest Hills and Monroe and Wingate University, and this is the third year, and we've also added partnerships with the NAACP this year to work with that, and I just think it's wonderful that that is a burgeoning and growing program, and we hope to do more next year. And Masoi, it was a privilege to see you here tonight. It was unexpected, but I did want to recognize the tremendous work Wingate University, and you in particular leading the program are doing for the children of Union County Public Schools, and I loudly and in open audience thank you and Wingate for your partnership.
Do we have any other announcements? Our newest, our newest doctor in the house, Dr. Shelton Jeffries, we want to congratulate you on hard work it has taken to get to that point. I understand from your colleagues that it is quite an arduous process, and there's a long waiting period, so I've been waiting a long time to recognize you as Dr. Shelton Jeffries. Congratulations. Could you please reiterate your dissertation?
That would be dry as dishwater, no.
All right. Do we have committee, Mr. Big?
Chair, I'd like to announce a custodians committee meeting on the twenty-ninth at eight-thirty at the Central Office for, okay, excuse me, I'm sorry, here, PDC.
Eight-thirty. All right. Any other committees? Okay. Let's move on then to plus delta. I again want to reiterate the work that the Strategic Planning Committee did, and I appreciate that. I know that was a difficult task, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Karpinski, thank you for a good budget. I look forward to some revisions and moving forward with that.
We're going to be having our SRO of the Year banquet upcoming. I think that may have already gone out to you folks, but the date was, the date was to the twelfth. I would encourage any of you to come to that. It's three-thirty here, right? Okay, on what date?
Maybe twelve.
Maybe the twelfth, but I want to make sure that you all have that. Is it Thursday? Oh, and this Thursday night is the Teacher of the Year banquet, and next sometime, we travel to, to see if Mr. Brad Bredele will be the North Carolina State Principal of the Year, next Thursday.
Fingers crossed. Okay. If anybody has anything else, I need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Collins. Thank you, sir. Next, thank you, Mr. Guzman. All in favor? Unanimous.